Just thank you for this time we had together, Lord. Just want to thank you for the fact that we live in a country that we have the freedom to pray to you openly, Lord. We want to thank you for that. Lord, watch over us as we make the decisions tonight that affect the citizens of our community. We just want to pray for those that may be in harm's way tonight with the storms that are anticipated. Just, Lord, we just pray that everything that we do tonight gives you the glory. You serve pride. Amen.
Counselor, why don't you get a chance to look at the minutes from the May 6th council meeting?
Move to approve. I'll second it.
Okay. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, let's open public hearing. Lynda, if you'll read B1 for us, please.
Conduct the first public hearing concerning the annexation of approximately 217.7 acres of land located west of FM 1417, south of Obi Groner Road, and east of Bradley Road, adjacent to the Sherman City limits and in the city of Sherman's extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Okay. Thank you. Lynda, Clint?
This is a request to annex 217 acres of land just southwest of the proposed Sherman High School. This request has been made by the sole owner of the property, the Muntz &amp; Realty Group, and this property is part of a future planned development. The rest of the area in that picture, it's actually all of the green, is owned by the Muntz &amp; Realty Group, and this is the last piece that isn't currently within the city limits, so they've requested to make that happen as part of this planned development. We are holding both public hearings tonight because this was a voluntary annexation, and the owner is here in case you guys have any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Clint. Is there anyone here to speak on this item this evening?
Mary, why, just here in my building.
Okay, thank you for being here. Anyone else? Okay. Lynda, if you'll read B2 for us, please.
Ordinance 6216, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sherman amending Chapter 8 of the Code of Ordinances entitled offenses and nuisances to delete Article 8.07 entitled noise in its entirety and to provide for a new Article 8.07 to be entitled noise, providing for an effective date, providing for inclusion in the Code of Ordinances, providing for severability, providing for repealer clause, finding that the meeting at which this ordinances passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law.
Okay. Thank you, Lynda. Terrence?
This ordinance is the result of a complaint at the Sherman High School that prompted us to look at our noise ordinance, and come to find out, our ordinance was adopted in 1991, and what we're recommending is, with the exception of the ordinance that you all recently passed for the construction, to completely revamp our noise ordinance. And so what this does is bring this more in speed with what's going on in Sherman today. It adds clarity, and we gleaned a lot of this from communities to the south of us that has higher density areas.
Okay. Thank you, Terrence. Is there anyone here to address this item this evening? Okay. Lynda, if you'll read B3 for us, please.
Conduct the second public hearing concerning the annexation of approximately 217.7 acres of land located west of FM 1417, south of Obi Groner Road, and east of Bradley Road, adjacent to the Sherman City limits and in the city of Sherman's extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Okay. Clint?
The second public hearing for what we just talked about a few minutes ago.
Okay, thank you. Anyone here to address this item this evening? Okay. This time, we'll close the public hearing and consider the adoption of ordinance 6216. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve 6216.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we are down to the consent agenda. This item is considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. It's the only item, so it can't be separated. We'll have a discussion on consent, counsel.
I would like to remove it from consent and just ask a question. Sorry, I just wondered why we wouldn't consider putting that in with the new police department. If we're going to build a new police department, why wouldn't we consider doing a new firearms training facility at that time?
I'll take what I think is the answer, and then Chief can chime in. So, first of all, the firearm training is located in a way out from a lot of density, out from a lot of traffic. It's on the southeast part of town and close to floodplain area that's never going to be developed for anything because of its locale, so it's best to use a facility like that, kind of out away from development and whatnot. We do have other appurtenances out there. Fire training is currently used there as well, and we use that site for a few other things as well. But if there's some more police-type things that may be, that you're asking about, then he can address that.
Mayor, counsel, just to address the question, so right now, we have an outdoor range, and again, as the city manager said, it's in a floodplain. It's actually technically in the county, and so as far as noise is concerned, because it is quite loud, we're not around a large residential area. We're kind of tucked back, and we, the people that do live in the area, they're aware that the range is there. We make accommodations to not shoot on holidays and things of that nature. And then if, so if we were to build it where a new police department would be, it would mandate that it would have to be an indoor range, it would just be cost prohibitive. And so we don't want to get into the situation where the scope of the project is, becomes cost prohibitive. And so that, for us, is one of the reasons why you wouldn't see that in a, in part of our plans. And so this is just to kind of update some of the things that we've got with an opportunity to do so, so.
Okay.
So what, maybe, I just don't see that. What is the anticipated cost, or is that part of what you're doing here to advertise to try to figure out what the cost is?
So, that's part of what we're doing, but the improvements that we look to make are less than $100,000.
Okay.
And what kind of improvement? I'm one of the ones who can hear you.
All right. So, we're looking to make some-
First pop, I always think, what was that?
What is that?
You know, then I realize, oh, they're practicing.
Yeah. So, we're looking to just repave the handgun range where we're at, put some shooting pads down for the rifle range where officers have to lay down to shoot from longer distances, and build a small little training building at a, what we believe can be a very affordable cost, so that we'll have a restroom out there. Right now, we don't have that luxury, or a place to, being out of the elements, to go over some of the finer points of shooting and some of the tactical aspects that we go through out there. We do have the luxury of having a very large area that we can do a lot of training at, but what we don't have is that area where we can sit and talk about things of that nature. So, again, those are really the three main elements that we look to do at a cost that we think we can come in around, or below $100,000.
Thank you.
So Chief, is this also a location that you guys work with, like, small explosives or anything of that nature?
We, yes, sir. We do work with small explosives there.
We're gonna need to maybe arrange a tour of that sometime for the council.
Yes, sir. Yes, so our special response team will work on breaching doors and things of that nature, so, with some explosives, so it can be loud. Thank you.
I move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, Lynda, if you'll read 6484 for us, please.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Sherman authorizing the acceptance and dedication of right-of-way, being called Legacy Boulevard, being dedicated to the City of Sherman by right-of-way dedication deeds filed of record in document numbers 2018-20633, 2018-19631, 2019-3223, Official Public Records, Grayson County, Texas, totaling 2.076 acres in the Sherrod-Dunham survey abstract number 329, being further described in Exhibit A attached for public use and utility purposes, being the construction of a road, Legacy Boulevard, east of US Highway 75, Frontage Road, and south of Vietnam Veterans Parkway, FM 1417, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law.
Thank you, Lynda. Clint?
So, street dedications are typically done by plat, and council approves those plats. This thoroughfare was not platted because there are several different owners. There's Schulman, Sedco, and then a property owner to the, a couple of property owners to the south, and so without them developing, we didn't plat this road specifically, so that's why this is being requested, is a formal dedication outside of the plat procedure to dedicate the road and allow us to have addressing off of Legacy Boulevard.
All right, thank you, Clint. Counsel, any questions on this item?
It, wow. It's a road that we constructed, however.
It is a city road. We did it by development agreement because they were out there already doing concrete work and roadwork, so, but it is a city street, paid by the city.
So what you're saying is typically, the developer will develop, but then they'll dedicate it to us, but in this situation?
Correct. Typically, when you-
We put the road in, we paid for it.
Yeah, when you accept a plat, which is a lot of times on the consent agenda, that instrument is what dedicates the roads, not just the deed to the city, but the actual dedication of the name of the road.
And this is actually the dedication of the right-of-way itself, right?
Yes.
For, for the road that's being built separately?
Okay. Any other questions?
I'd move to approve.
Okay. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, C2 and C3 kind of go together, so Lynda, if you'll read C2 for us, please.
Resolution 6485, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Sherman awarding a bid to and authorizing execution of a contract with the Playground Shade and Surfacing Depot LLC for the pavilion and bench improvements of the Martin Luther King Jr. Park Project, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law.
Thank you, Lynda. Teresa, can you tell us about the next two items?
Sure. We're here to request to award bids to Playground Shade and Surfacing Depot and Lee Play and Park Structures for the MLK Park Renovation Project. This project will be completed using community development block grant funding, similar to the library project a couple of weeks ago. We're very specific on the bid packets. We specified a duo-top pavilion, and the lowest comparable bid was the Playground Depot. As far as the play structure, there were four bids. Lee Park and Play was chosen because the playground that they submitted provided a better value. Worlick's Design submitted two bids. One, option one was a smaller playground that provided only seven active play components. Option two was larger, but still only had seven components. But the cost for the LEA system, which was right in the middle of those two, provided 16 active play components. We feel like this was a better, better spend for our money, I guess, if you will. Are there any questions on any of that?
This is CDBG money, correct?
That's correct.
It's not Sherman money?
That's right. I have photos of the playground structures if you would like to see them, not-
So, the last company that you, that y'all chose were getting 16 active?
That's right.
Versus seven?
Yes, that's correct. It's a much larger play structure. It'll be lots of fun for the kiddos.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's great. Now, the provision, the pavilion improvement that we're having, what is it, made out of something different that we're using?
It's the same exact pavilion that we're putting in over at the library, and when we bid these, we bid them on the same day, and we were hoping to get a discount for purchasing two at the same time.
Right.
And these will replace the three wooden pavilions that are over there right off of Evergreen Street.
Okay. So we did get the discount?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It may not seem like it, but we did.
I move to approve Resolution 6485.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Did you do just 85 or 64?
I was gonna do them one at a time.
Yeah, one at a time.
I also moved to approve Resolution 6486, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Second.
Okay. With multiple seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. We're down to the presentation from Chief Zachary Flores and Hydel Associates Consultant, Aaron Babcock, on the Sherman Police Department's current and proposed facilities. Chief?
Mayor, counsel? So, most of you are, have met or have been able to see Aaron Babcock. He is an architect that the city has used on multiple projects, and I've been working with him over the past couple of years, going through several different options for the police department. So ultimately, we've really taken a look at four different options, and what we're here to show you tonight are what we've been able to narrow down as really the two most viable options. And really, the hope and intent is that we're able to cover some ground tonight, and so that we don't have to camp out on it at the budget retreat, and so to give y'all a very foundational knowledge and answer any questions y'all may have as far as that. So, without any further introduction, Aaron, I'll turn it over to you.
Mayor, council members?
As Zach said, I presented to most of you before, I think, and we looked at a couple of different options. Tonight, we're gonna look specifically at two different options, and I don't know if we have the power.
We got one emailed to us.
Yeah, it's in the agenda.
Okay, we'll go ahead and-
I have it in front of me.
Pam will give that, and-
I will do that. So, the two-
Karen has it on the thumb track.
The two different options we're gonna look at is really an option A and an option D in the council packet that you had. Option A is the renovation of the existing facility. Existing facility is about 19,000 square feet, and the renovation looked at what it would take to renovate that facility for the police needs. That comes to about $4.6 million, and what it allows the police department to do is to increase to about 90 force-worn officers. Currently, they're in the 70 range, so it is limited in the amount of expansion that they could do within the facility as it exists today. Option D that we looked at is sort of threefold, okay? There's three different components to this. The first component would be moving the police out of that facility and creating a new headquarters for them. Be about 24,000-square-foot facility, brand-new, and we would move basically all departments of the police except for communications. Currently, the 911 operation is at the existing facility, and we are not proposing moving that because it becomes cost prohibitive to move that component, and it works where it's at currently. The second part of that would be then renovating that existing facility that the police are in. In this D option, what we looked at is bringing over other city departments within that facility. So included in the facility would be fire administration. They would have a fire training room. We'd have fire investigations there. We would also have, let me flip my page. We would also have parking enforcement. We would utilize part of the existing facility for a police substation. We'd have environmental code, and in the basement, we would revamp that to be the emergency operations center for the city. So that would take up basically all 19,000 square feet of that facility. It would move those components over. The third sort of domino of this would be by bringing fire administration over, that would free up the existing central fire station that's across the street and have it have the ability to revert back to basically a fire station. So there's a renovation component of it to turn it into a 10-bunk fire station with a day room, offices, really put it back to an original fire station and upgrade it. Part of the cost for each of these, once the graphics come up, is we did look at facade improvements for both facilities, for the existing facility as well, the existing police facility as well as the existing fire facility. What we, we looked at a couple of different options. We settled on a more modest approach, which would include new windows, redoing some of the existing facade, enclosing the lower floor, if you're familiar with the police station, to gain that square footage, so that the police facility and the fire facility would have a similar look to them. It really anchors that as a municipal area within the downtown corridor. The cost for the renovation of the existing facility would be about $2.7 million. Oh, here we go. Let's start right there. So, this is the existing facade. We talked about the renovation of, or enclosing of that lower area. If you can flip to the next slide, go back one, there you go. So, what we're talking about is, is skinning a portion of the facility, putting in new windows, a new canopy, so that it has a fresh new look to the building itself. The other thing that you start to see is we, we are including 10 off-street parking spaces. Currently, right now, the only public parking is on the street, so this would give them 10 additional off-street parking, and really, this facility would turn into that fire administration facility that we were discussing. And then if we can flip to the next one, we'll see the parking, and if you can go one more for me, we get to the cost. So, the cost itself, we looked at the renovation of this and what it would take to renovate the facility. We have about $1.7 million in renovation costs, and then we, we know we have to put a fire sprinkler in, the additional parking, the facade improvements, as well as there was an asbestos report done for this facility. We know there is some abatement that would have to be done during the renovation. That gets us to about $2.1 million. Then we have technology, security, and furniture costs, then as well as a contingency, testing, and professional fees. So the bottom-line number that you're seeing of $2.7 million, that really is a project cost. That includes the fees associated with doing the drawings and then the construction as well.
And Aaron, on that one, so that's primarily the facade, well, let me say it this way, it's not the top floor because that is substantially complete now, or a lot complete, although the bathrooms would be-
Correct.
-a part of option D.
That's correct, Robbie. So, the existing facility has deficiencies in both ADA as well as building code deficiencies. The big ADA culprit is the restroom, so on the second floor, there's already been some renovation that's been done to that floor, but that would include renovating those restrooms as well as a couple of little minor corridor adjustments to make the fire stair access meet ADA. So really, it's the, the, the ground floor, the basement floor, the facade improvements, and then some minor, minor improvements to the second floor. That's correct. If we want to flip to the next, so then we're talking about the existing central fire station. So, once fire administration moves over to the existing police building, then that gives us the ability to renovate that existing police, or fire facility. As I said earlier, it's really 10 bunks, it's a day room, offices, showers, appropriate restrooms. You know, once again, this building has been around for a long time, so there are some upgrades that need to be done to it to make it more efficient and really turn it back into a fire facility. It really does concentrate most of the renovations on the, the interior portion of it, where the apparatus bays, other than fixing some floor drains and putting new overhead doors, that's about all we'd be doing to the apparatus bays because they are sufficient and work currently. If we go on more, so this would be the existing facade, if we flip, so now the new facade. So this is similar to what you just saw with the police building across the street, so you're getting some sort of consistency. And once again, we took a more modest approach to where we would be painting a lot of the exposed concrete that's on this, but then adding or skinning some of the facade, adding a canopy so that there's some consistency or dialogue between the two buildings.
When was that central fire station built, you know?
I think it was fif-
When was it?
64. 64, that sounds right.
And the fire sta-, I mean, the police station was 66?
65.
65. Yeah. And they're similar construction, they're cast-
Right.
-cast-in-place concrete buildings, they're not gonna go anywhere. So the bones are good. So the existing facility renovation for the fire station, once again, we looked at a similar costing for it of about $528,000 in renovation, and then we have the exterior facade improvements, floor drain repair. We do know there's some abatement in that building as well, just because of the year of it, overhead door replacements, epoxy floor on the apparatus bay, fire sprinkler, and then the, there's an existing glass wall on the north that is really inefficient from a mechanical perspective. It really doesn't work well for the facility and does not really provide any, any comfort inside, so we would, we would propose a new masonry wall there so we could upgrade that portion of the facility. That gets us to about a little over $700,000, and then with our technology, security, our fees, once again, that bottom-line number approaching $1 million would be an all-in cost for the renovation of that facility. If we want to flip to the next one, so then the, the new facility. So as I said before, basically, all components of the, of the police station would move over to a new facility in the scenario that we're talking about now, except for communications. That 911 would stay at the existing. So what moves over is administration, records, CI, property and evidence, patrol, and then support and training within that facility. What we're recommending is about 5.4 acres. What that gets you is the ability to have 50 public parking spaces, 124 secure spaces, as well as accommodations for and future growth on that site. The facility recommendations are a little over 24,000 square feet. That gets you to 128 sworn officers versus just renovating the existing is about 94. Plus, if you look at it, it has the ability to then expand in the future. What we looked at is about a 10-to-15-year timeframe for this building, knowing that at that point in time, you would then have to potentially expand it within that range. We want to flip to the next one, I think we have a site plan. So on this site plan, and these are just preliminary, but gives you the idea that we would have a facility in orange, and then the purple that you're seeing are expansion opportunities for that, for that building. We would have a covered vehicle storage, we'd have the secured parking, the red dashed line, then we'd have public parking. So, go ahead, go to the next one. And then this just gives a vision of the public entrance into the, the facility itself. And if we flip one more, we have the cost. And once again, an all-total cost for this would be around $12 million. This is today's dollars, so that you know, it's 2019 dollars, and the construction costs that we're seeing for this and basing this off of are some projects that we recently did within the last year. So if we want to go to the next slide, so this gives us sort of that idea of the dominos. So, this renovation of the existing police facility, it gets us to about 17,000 square feet, $2.7 million. Fire administration would have 14, environmental code would have five, this number of the staff. IT is a component of that. It would give them some expansion. IT already has a presence there at the existing police facility because of the 911, and this would expand their, their presence there a little bit with a few offices, as well as an ability to add servers in the future. Communications, future offices, and future workstations. Then renovation of the existing fire station, once again, turning that back into more of a traditional fire facility. And then the new facility itself, 24,000 square feet, about 12 million. So, this would have a total capital cost of about $15.8 million. Now, from a timeline perspective, the way this would work is you would most likely, if you wanted to move forward, you would do the new police facility first. Construct that, have the police be able to move out of their existing facility, and then renovate that existing facility itself. To design and build the police facility, you're probably looking anywhere from 18 months to two years, right in that timeframe, and then to renovate the existing building is probably, probably around 10 months to a year, because communications is gonna stay there. There still would be operations within that facility, so the contractor wouldn't take it over entirely, so we would have to work that out. And then, once that was complete, fire administration could move over and that existing fire station could be renovated. That's probably an eight-to-10-month timeframe.
So I just want to touch on a couple of issues that we received from the council in, in previous conversations. So one is we fill in the covered, the under-parking at the police station for security and expansion issues. It takes care of a couple of problems. The second is parking. So, if we were to go with option A, where the police department stays and renovates where we currently are, we can't afford to give up any of our parking within where the employees are at now because we simply have too many vehicles. We're running with 20-plus service vehicles right now, and so we just don't have the space to give up. If we go with option D, you're able to see where he was able to take in a little bit of that, give angled parking to where the public has easier access into the facility. So if we remain where we're at, the parking just isn't one of the issues that we're able to really accommodate. We're doing our best as we stand now. Several administrators, we park along the street, and so we try to accommodate as best we can. But those were two issues that the council had brought forward. But those were two issues that the council had brought forward in times past as we discussed it. Those we took into account as we went into trying to deal with these issues. And so, with that, if the council has any questions, Ann and I are open.
Yeah, so there's, just to reiterate, there's no action to be taken tonight. We're not asking for direction, not asking for head nods or votes or anything. We're gonna have a full day at the budget workshop as it is with all the topics we're gonna be covering, so we wanted to have this, you know, 20 or 30-minute conversation and presentation now so that we can dive into this. We'll, we'll tee it back up and set it up a little bit, I guess, at the budget workshop, but it is something that we will want your direction on at the budget workshop. Now that we have, we're kind of refining our, our options here. We, we can stay in place, or we can build a new one and renovate and use it for multi-purposes as was discussed tonight. So, just wanted to remind you that we're not expecting anything tonight from you, just to pitch this to you again so that you know what's going on.
So, the 12.1 million for the new facility, what, how does that compare to what was presented? That sounds about what it was.
It's similar, yeah.
Give or take.
Give or take.
The, the design necessarily wasn't changed much?
Correct, correct. So, when we presented this before, we did look at two options, just so that you know. We looked at an option of leaving evidence.
Leaving and then moving everything.
Right. So, this one is the option that takes evidence with it and makes it more of a complete facility.
And then, with the renovations to the central fire, and this may be for the fire chief, that's a new, that's a new idea, which is interesting to me. How would that compare to like what we've done with the new fire, fire station as far as beds and those kind of things? I mean, it looks to me like you're gonna be able to house a lot of firefighters in the...
Yeah, the...
...of the central, I mean, is that gonna, where is that gonna put you as far as future expansion with moving more firefighters into central and moving your administration across the street? Is that, what's that gonna do for you in the future?
That allows us to open that station back up to, to allow more of a, we, we don't have, we have a classroom, but it barely holds the ship personnel. This takes the administrative office out, allows us to expand the, the fire station part of it with a, an actual day room, an actual, which is just a small corridor right now, a day room, a dining room, and the kitchen. It just basically takes the offices, the administrative offices out of the front and then expands the fire station out. Add, add some dorm rooms.
We would, the adding, one of the things that adding the dorms and rooms would allow is for us to, to take it back to a full-service station. Right now, it's just running an engine out of there, and the reason we can't run an ambulance out and an engine is because we don't have the bed, you know, the, the dorm room.
And that's where I'm going with that. So, does that, does that buy us some more time with, with that versus having to go build a whole new station is where I'm going with that?
It could.
That was a good, that was a good answer.
I would also like to notate that it is one of the new things that you see in this presentation, and what we, again, have been cognizant to do or to stay away from in, in all of our projects, is increasing the scope to where it becomes prohibitive. However, what we wanted to present y'all was a comprehensive look at what one action would lead to a final action, so that the council didn't have to worry about, well, if we do this to the fire station, then what's next? This is the, this is the full extent of the project with all three buildings that are involved, and we wanted to be able to present y'all the project in its entirety. And so, how we chose to attack it is a phased project that we would look to city management and city council force some direction on. However, I asked Aaron to bring us a comprehensive look at what it would be, so that it removed any ambiguity that you may have seen in it. We wanted to fill in those holes and give you a complete picture.
No, and I think that was my concern, that we were going to get to a place where we weren't taking care of the, the future necessarily in, I mean, the renovations to the central, I don't know had ever been discussed before, and, and that is intriguing to me, that I think that buys us some more time and with, I don't want to say with very little dollars, but compared to everything else, that's very little dollars.
Compared to building, an admin building just for fire, yeah, it's...
Absolutely, and I don't remember right off the top of my head what the new fire station cost, but it was four, five million dollars.
It's about four.
Station four was 3.6.
Yeah.
Roundish.
So, I mean, it's, if that, if that could...
Buy us a little more time, then I think that's, that's an option to pursue.
Yeah. So, Zach, what was the, the idea, if you, we ended up with option A, what was the idea for parking? I mean, there just was no good...
There is none.
Just a...
So, it would remain as it stands now.
Fire department parking?
Park, we...
In charge.
Don't park in front of the bay doors?
To go with option A, the parking would remain as it is today.
Well, you lose the under.
Yeah.
We lose that, correct.
And that's four spaces.
So, right now, we leave that, that's, that's four spaces for the public to use, and that would just force them onto the street, side parking on the street.
And then, the difference in this and the, we had a, the last time we discussed this, we had just a facade, I think, proposal at one point, maybe of 600 and some odd thousand dollars.
Right.
That didn't address any interior work, I guess, right?
Correct. The 600,000 would have just been the facade.
I got you. Yep.
So, again, we look to reduce the scope of that project to allow us to, again, be cognizant and pay attention to the project as a whole.
We haven't identified any location at this point, or have we?
Um, possibly, yeah. Possibly, yeah.
It could.
Yeah, we've got some ideas.
You see the curvature, then there's a spot there.
You thought about it, but you haven't.
Yeah.
The 15-year expansion that we have, how many sworn officers would that add to it if, after the, after it's built? And then, we have 15-year expansion?
How much expansion do you think we'd have?
So, you're probably, that's probably about another 8,000 square feet, and what's tricky to answer that is the two purplaries you're seeing is you would assume that CI and patrol are the two components that are increasing. So, you're gonna be able to increase your officers disproportionately to the size of the building, meaning that you're gonna go from 128 to probably closer to 150 with, with that expansion. And, you know, that's preliminary at the moment. You know, we could always plan in additional or a larger expansion in the future in looking at that.
And what's the lifespan of just the renovation on option A if we do that as far as expansion on employment and staffing is concerned?
So, again, that is a tricky question to answer in that, the proportions of sworn officers to the staff that we actually have. So, as city manager had alluded to earlier, we've already done some renovations upstairs, hoping that that would buy us room for four more detectives. Unfortunately, we've had to move some other people in there, so we've got space for two more detectives. We could add a number of possibly upwards of 20 patrolmen, since they spend most of their time out on the streets. We could possibly, as Aaron talked to earlier, house up to 90 officers in addition to our civilian staff. How long that would take just depend on the growth of the city.
And right now, we have about 70 sworn officers, so 90 would give you a 28.6% increase in the number of sworn officers, and so, I mean, how quickly do we burn through those? I don't know. How quickly are we gonna grow? You know, we're talking about, and we'll be at the workshop about some of these developments...